Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's called a roll?
Councilmember Grisgovia.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One accent, Novak.
Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler to adopt the agenda. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. The very first item on that agenda is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. To that end, we have a proclamation here. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and wealth concern, I'm sorry, health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and whereas domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law. And whereas, over thousands of women, men, and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and whereas domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change. And whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas, during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we, as a concerned community, can do to eliminate its existence. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 15th day of October, 2024. And Chief, we're still all lit up with purple for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, aren't we, sir?
We are, sir.
Thanks for dragging that out a little bit. All right, here we go.
I feel like I addressed it prematurely last.
All right, no, no, that was fine. All right, item two, approve the minutes from the October 1st, 2024 agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Grisgovia. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are adopted. We have four items on our consent agenda. And the first of which is to, it's now a regular thing for our meetings, receive a schedule of electronic payments. Staff has prepared the attached list of electronic payments processed since the last council meeting, and so we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from September 26th, 2024 to October 9th, 2024. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve final payment to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated for Project 23-7, 2023 Well Rehabilitation Program. There were, the change orders were for changes to release, to release valves, column pipe sizes, and repairs at booster pump number two, as well as quantity adjustments from the original bid. So we're looking to approve of change orders and final payment to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $36,243.46 for Project 23-7 Well Rehabilitation Program. The next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 24-95, approving Parks and Recreation Commission appointments. Julie Rolfsen and Kylie Umlak each applied for the Parks and Recreation Commission. After discussion with the applicants and both attending recent meetings, the Parks and Recreation Commission supports their appointments to fill vacancies with a term ending in 2026. I'll do a blanket apology first. If I'm mispronouncing it, I am sorry. Staff recommends, I'm sorry, we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-95, appointing Julie Rolfsen and Kylie Umlak to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And the fourth and final item on our consent agenda is to accept an easement agreement for Project 24-22 Foley Monopole, Plan Case 24-18, as part of the city's planned water tower decommissioning and subsequent monopole construction at 11316 Foley Boulevard. Staff has negotiated the attached easement agreement for the temporary use of portions of the adjacent property. Staff has worked with the property owner to discuss how the city's proposed improvements may impact their property, and negotiated in good faith to arrive at fair and reasonable compensation to efficiently complete the city's planned project. So we're looking to accept the temporary easement with Jeffrey Smith and authorize the execution of the agreement. And that's our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I'd like to give a warm welcome to Julie and Kylie, and thank you for joining our Parks and Recreation Commission, and we greatly appreciate all of our commissioners that helped do the work of the city. We couldn't do it without your support. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. If you were courageous, you would have tried those last names.
Gifted.
Is there any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is adopted. Our next item is item seven, and this will require a public hearing on establishing a housing improvement area for Village Manor Condominium Association. Mr. Brody, is there anything from here?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor and counsel, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to allow for specifically residents of the proposed housing improvement area to come in and speak about the project or the housing improvement area. After that public hearing is closed, we'd ask that you introduce the ordinance that would establish the housing improvement area, which is essentially this particular association. The work they're looking to have done is roof replacement with some soffits and gutters related to that. So the very first step, or I guess this is the second step, is to introduce this ordinance. We would potentially adopt it at the next meeting, and that sort of begins the process then for getting, or I think we have estimates, but for further establishing what's going to be done, them bringing in their financial plans and what their plans are for the future to avoid having to do this in the future. And there's a few more steps before this project actually will take place if it goes through fully. So tonight, we just asked that you open that public hearing and conduct that, and then introduce the ordinance to establish the housing improvement area.
Okay. And this is for the eight units down on 109th Lane that are known as the Village Manor Condominium Association? And this is certainly not the first time we've done this in town.
No, this is one of the smaller ones that we've done, which is.
All right. Does counsel have any questions of Mr. Brody before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. Open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing for the home improvement, the housing improvement area for Village Manor Condominiums? Please, sir.
Is anyone by the old target?
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Oh, no, come on up to the mic, sir, and introduce yourself, and now's your time.
My name is Jim Hutchinson, and I was just coming to see what was going on. I didn't realize this was going to happen. I live down the hill from there.
Oh.
And it's very, very tight when you come over that hill, people coming down the middle of the road. Are you going to be blocking that road up? I mean, if they're going to, if they're going to do this, they got to stay the hell out of the way, because that's, that's a skinny area to begin with.
I'm not sure what we're talking about, sir. This, this is those eight units of condominiums on 109th and Flora Street, and we're going to be.
Oh, Flora, okay. No, I thought this was the big one, the five-story.
Oh, you were talking River, River, River North Apartments?
Yeah.
Oh, no, there's no work going, nothing there that we know of.
All right, then I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just, it's, it's so hard when you come up that hill. I mean, wow. Something, something should be done, you know, to, I don't know, put a barrier or something there to keep those people on one side of the road.
When I, when I grew up, there was a barricade there, and that was a dead end, you know?
I, I remember when they burned those houses down, the target and all that, just to build those damn things.
All right.
I think.
The words of Rosanna, Rosanna Dana, never mind. Is anybody here to address counsel for the housing improvement area for Village Manor Condominiums Association? All right, then we are going to close that public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
I think we're just.
Just introducing.
It's just an introduction.
But I have a.
Go ahead.
So just so, and anybody who's looking at this, this is a standard process that we will do to help out groups that are looking at certain financing. It's not something that the city is paying for. We're just helping to facilitate this process for them. So I just want to make sure that if anybody has any questions, that if, that they think the city is paying for this, we are not.
It's, it's a really valuable tool if an association needs to have a lot of work done. The ones near us on Robinson Drive, they did siding, garage doors, aprons, I mean, they did a lot of work, and it's just a nice way for them to all of a sudden get caught up again.
Yes.
All right, any other questions on this? Hearing none. We will consider an ordinance establishing a housing improvement area for Village Manor Condominium Association located at 34, I'm sorry, 3048 109th Lane and 3060 109th Lane Item eight is to consider Resolution 24-16 Sub 9, awarding a contract for the 2024 Lift Station Rehabilitation Project 24-16. Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm here to make a recommendation for you tonight to award a lift station rehabilitation and Minger construction. While I would have liked to have a few more bids on this, we did get competitive bids. We are under what the proposed budget was. There are two bid alternates on this project. It's bypass pumping. We're not sure, we'll need to do that until we get into evaluating it. So we're going to look to award the contract with the two alternatives to Minger for $498,000, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
And if we have to do the exercise, the alternate and do the bypass pumping, we're not going to be crossing any roads or anything.
If we do have to cross roads, sometimes you will have to do either some ramping over a driveway that might be adjacent to it, or we may have to do a subcut underneath it.
Okay.
But the runs aren't that long, so it shouldn't be that, that drastic.
Nothing like 99th Avenue in Egress there.
Correct. Shorter, much, much shorter.
All right. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia.
I have a question for Mr. Hammer. Is this similar to the well rehabilitation where the engineers estimate on this is for a worst-case scenario to fix all that stuff? Or have all of the necessary repairs and work been identified, and these three contractors bid on just that work?
Yeah, Councilmember Grisgovia, last year, we did an evaluation of a lot of our lift stations, so we identified specific needs and we prioritized those. So these are all needed. There, there's some discrepancy in the valves themselves. I didn't want to go down and start to operate these valves without knowing I have the backup stuff ready to go. So that's why we looked at the alternates for the bypass. But these are all needed improvements.
Okay, gotcha. We, you know, we probably won't see something coming in $170,000 under contracted amount like we saw with the, with the well rehabilitation.
No, if, if anything, we'll forego those alternates, or we'll look at a different solution to try to, you know, it might be a low flow, and we could get by with something less, and we'll just process a change order at that time. But no, we're not going to look at any real significant cost savings or overages on this, unless something goes drastically bad.
You know that doesn't work, right?
It's worth a try.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-16 Sub 9, awarding a contract to Minger Construction Companies in the total of $498,000 for various rehabilitation measures associated with sanitary sewer lift stations 5, 6, and 10.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine, looks like we're going to sell some real estate. Consider adoption of Ordinance 2315, authorizing the sale of real estate 12258 Crooked Lake Boulevard. Mr. Brown, we've talked about this so much, I don't recall if you talked about it at the council meeting or not. Does, do people?
Yes, we talked about it a little bit two weeks ago when this ordinance was introduced.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that's, oh, we introduced it, now we're adopting it. Thank you, I'm up to speed. It's concerning when I'm not, isn't it? All right, does anybody have any questions about the sale of that property?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia.
I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyway, because this is a city council meeting and not an HRA meeting, but the proceeds of this fund, where did they land?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and we, we established that in, in the ordinance as well, but the sale proceeds would go into the revolving construction fund, since the property was originally acquired for transportation purposes.
And is that where, is that where we took funds out of that to acquire the property? Do you know?
It is not 100% clear, just because that transaction occurred back almost 25 years ago.
Yep.
But, but likely.
I think resolving revolving construction fund's a good spot for the land, and we can use it there.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, just mentioned, you know, as we're sort of anticipating over the next year to two, what, the sale of property and the potential purchase of property, we do foresee paying for any new property that, particularly the site near the Coon Rapids Ice Center, that if we purchase it, it will come out revolving construction fund, so we're trying to put some dollars there to sort of supplement dollars going out in the future.
Perfect. Makes sense.
All right. Any other questions on this? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2315, authorize conveyance of the property at 12258 Crooked Lake Boulevard to 246 Home Capital Incorporated, and to approve the purchase and redevelopment agreement with 246 Home Capital Incorporated, to authorize mayor and city manager to execute a deed, and to authorize staff to execute other closing documents as necessary to effectuate the closing.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I just want to say how pleased I'll be to actually see people in that house.
Yeah.
Really nice. It'd be nice to see people in that house again. So, that's all I have to say.
That's all I have to say.
That's all I have to say about that.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance establishing fees for 2025. Ms. Hanson, I know you went over this in great detail with us in the workshop. Is there any highlights you want to hit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those at home, so we have a attached to the agenda item, a redlined version of our proposed 25-fee schedule noting any changes. For most fees, we used an increased by a 4% adjustment factor. Some of the fees to highlight, just that we do include proposed changes to the water and sewer user fees. Those are highlighted in the document as well. So be a, for the, for water, it'd be a base fee increase of $2.80 for the residential and commercial properties, and then a 10, 10 cent increase for the tiers. For sewer, it would be a $4 increase to the base fee for residential, and a 10 cent per thousand gallon for residential on the usage, and 15 cent per thousand gallon on the non-residential. Overall, the, for the average residential user, they would see about a $20.40 per year increase for water, and a $20.80 per year for sewer. Additionally, there were some adjustments to alcohol beverage licenses that require a public hearing. So in addition, in addition to asking for the ordinance introduction, we're asking to set a public hearing for the November 6th, 2024 council meeting for increases to those fees outlined in the agenda item.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia, or Geisler? Get the G in there. Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, just kudos to staff, and what we're, one of the other things that we're trying to do is make this easier for the public. So in the past, if you would be looking at, well, where's this figure, that fee, you might have found them in three or four different spots. Now, working to consolidate, so all of our fees are going to be in one place. We're going to be reviewing those on an annual basis, you know, and so it just makes it easier for people to find. So if you're interested in looking at whatever fees there are, they're now all in one place, and that's what will be coming for us, before us in the 6th of November.
Very good. All right, any other questions? If there are no other questions, then we will consider an ordinance establishing fees for 2025 introduced. Item 11 is to consider a budget amendment for an easement agreement and memorandum of understanding for Project 19-26 US 10 Improvements. Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. This is the second easement agreement on the agenda tonight. You may remember in work session, we have some water main that's in MinDOT's right-of-way, and with the third lane coming up, we've got a noise wall that will be constructed in substantially the same place. So we looked at different ways to move that water main, and what we found is the best solution would be to get it out of MinDOT right-of-way once and for all. It's going to be easier for us to maintain, and we never have to worry about it again with any future projects. So staff approached Metro Storage. They were the ones that built the pond on this property. It's, it's part of their stormwater feature, and we negotiated with them, working with the city attorney and the city appraiser, arriving at a cost per square foot, and then some attorney's fees for their review of the document. So what's before you tonight is an agreement, both an easement agreement as well as a memo of understanding for that easement to relocate that water main. Budgeting for this is included in the 2025 budget, but because we need to get this out of the ground, and they're talking about letting that US 10 project here in January or February, we need to get out of the way in advance. So I'm happy to stand for any questions.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Very excited to hear that this is going to be starting soon, and so with that, I make a motion to accept the permanent easement and MOU with N5 Coon Rapids LLC, and to authorize execution of the agreements, and adopt Resolution 24-96, amending the water budget, the water fund budget for the purchase of the permanent easement.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia.
Just looking at the map, Mr. Hammer, does, I mean, you've obviously looked at this pretty in-depth, but the entire water main has to be moved. It looks like there's just a couple sections of the water main that are going to be in the way of the sound wall. Is, what's the reasoning to move the entire water main line instead of just connecting portions?
Councilmember Grisgovia, if we were to leave that in the ground, we would basically have a water main under a noise wall. We could look at sleeving it, construction in the future, and maintenance of that thing in the future would become problematic. So as opposed to just trying to piece little, bits and pieces of it together, not to mention it's, it's kind of an older water main, so it's going to serve some dual purposes to improve our maintenance as well as have it out of the way for history.
Okay. I, I would think that that water main's not that old because of the slip ramp and things that were done, I don't know, within the last 20 years or so?
We bought the house 25 years ago.
25 years ago, so it's at least 25. But it just looks like only two sections of the current water main will be under the current, in the alignment of the sound wall, so just.
Looking at our ASBILTS, it was installed in 1982, and while we may not be directly under that noise wall, you have to excavate down to get to that. So you've got an excavation that's anywhere from 10 feet wide. So it, we'd be boxing, it would just change your construction methods and increase your costs to do that.
Okay. Well, that makes sense with the width of the sound wall construction area that we would be running up against that. So just looking at the map, I just had a question that popped up, so.
All right. Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are to the, to the open-mic public comments. Anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? We have any open-mic concerns? All right, close that. I don't have any reports on previous open mics. And we're up to other business, and the very first thing I'd like to cover on other business is we're very fortunate, we have Mr. Anderson with us tonight, our golf, director of golf out at Bunker Hills Golf Course in Kendall's Tavern and Chop House, and maybe you can tell us what's going on. There's a lot of exciting changes this fall, aren't there?
Mayor, counsel, it, it's always an exciting time at Bunker Hills. Of course, I'm biased.
Let's get that out of the way right away.
It's, it's easy for any golf manager to be in a fantastic mood in Minnesota in 2024 when you have a season start on January 30th outdoors. That's a pretty fantastic thing, and I'd just like to thank first everyone who's come out this year so far. We have a great forecast, so I say so far. Outside, I've never heard so many comments any, any year previous that I've been there, positive comments about the golf course conditions. Certainly, Mother Nature plays a big role in that, but the greens superintendent Brad Hable and the entire grounds team has done a fantastic job again this year, and, and a lot of those folks that are, are drive up to Bunker Hills because of how good that golf course is. But, you know, there's so many things that are happening at Bunker Hills behind, beyond the outdoor season, you know, once we move indoors. There are improvements to the facility being made. There's been some siding improvements on the building that will continue into next year. There will be some improvements, small projects on the golf course as well. But as we move in, whenever snow arrives, if it ever arrives, we have an indoor golf facility that we welcome folks to with four golf simulators. The day we close outside is when we open inside. I'm very happy to also announce, if you haven't heard, that the dinner, Seasons Dinner Theater has returned to Bunker Hills after a hiatus. This year's production is called Oh, Crud, It's Christmas. And there are still some, some room for bookings for that. That will be in December, and information can be found at bunkerhillsgolf.com or at the Bunker Hills Event Center website. Beyond that, you know, holiday parties abound, and soon we'll be decorating the inside of the facility to welcome all those folks to the facility as well.
I think the dinner theater has been gone for almost 15 years, and the McCarthy's just do such a great job, and it's so exciting to have them back with their full production. And I know everybody is really excited that it's back in Coon Rapids again. You know? Oh, crud. I know, the only thing I know for sure, it'll be good and it'll be funny.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
So we've got other things going on. So Saturday, Rocky's Pumpkin Patch, it's going to be great fun time. It's Saturday at the Sand Creek Park from 10:00 AM to 1:00. So your kids can come, have them all dressed up and ready to go, trick-or-treating, there's bingo, musical chairs, a bounce house, face painting, you know, a photo booth, and prizes and giveaways and candy, and, you know, we always have our police officers there with the police vehicles and a fire truck, and, you know, usually there's some sort of a public works vehicle there, and so lots of fun for the kids. So come out to Sand Creek Park on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Lots of fun.
Did you mention they would all get a pumpkin?
I don't know if I said that, but yes.
There will be thousands of pumpkins.
There's thousands of pumpkins, so your kid can go home with a pumpkin.
And, and, and at home, I have thousands of pieces of candy. So there's like 16 vendors that will be giving out candy in various streets for the kids, and, you know, if you'll come and say hi to the mayor, I'll be over at the Coon Rapids Rotary one.
And, and I'm, I'm sure Rocky will be there as well.
Yeah. And then this past Saturday, just to, just to make sure you get it in your calendar for next year, we had a very successful fire department open house. It was really well attended. The tours went on just all morning. They were trying to cut them off at noon and. They were trying to cut them off at noon, and they, they were still holding on, holding on to them. Just a great event, and next year, you really want to make sure you come out. I'm pretty sure we're going to do it at Fire Station 3 again. It was so successful. The LifeLink helicopter came in, and everybody's all excited about that, and lots of stuff going on.
And then the other thing, because I'll bring up, since we won't have another meeting before then, on Sunday, October 27th, is going to be Spooky Skate. So if you want to go to the ice arena, that's from 5:30 to 7:30, and go skate at the ice arena, there are, there is a charge for $6 for adults and $5 for seniors and children, anybody over five, that, another fun time and fun event that you can do at the Coon Rapids Ice Arena.
All right.
And then my next one, I'll, I'll go to Ms. Lenzmeyer, because we, ongoing with absentee voting at City Hall, and big event starting on Friday with direct balloting. If you want to take us through all of the fun, fun of voting.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, yes, we are open for in-person absentee voting here at City Hall, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. And Friday, the 18th, we move into the direct balloting process, where you come in and request a ballot, and you vote it. You could place it in the machine yourself. So we expect to be busy, but we'll be staffed up and ready to go. We also have a couple of extra Saturdays in there, if your schedule doesn't allow you to come during the weekday. Saturday, the 26th, we're here from 9:00 to 3:00. And November 2nd, Saturday, we are here from 9:00 to 3:00. We'll also be open on a Sunday, November 3rd, from 9:00 to 3:00. So lots of opportunities, come out and vote. If you have questions, give a call to the hotline, or check our website, or you can visit mnvotes.org for more.
Awesome.
Thank you. And I, I think your ability to register online just closed.
Today.
So, but you still can register to vote if you aren't currently registered. You can do that in person at the civic center if you're voting early, or on election day at your precinct.
That's correct.
All right.
That's all the fun stuff I had. Oh, no, I had one other question. I was going to ask Mr. Stemwell, just, do we know when our new flags are coming? Because we still have the old flag out in front of the, the building. And I, just wondering if we've got them on order, when they're showing up, so we can, at least people at the buildings where we've got the Minnesota flag up, we'll at least put the right one up.
Any other business to come before council this evening?
No, I'm just, do we have an answer, or?
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, counsel, we, you know, there probably should be a council work session discussion about what, you know, what flags we want to present at City Hall buildings. We aren't required by state statute or otherwise to apply any particular flags, and I know I had some questions about that a couple of months ago when this first came up. So if it's all right with counsel, I would suggest that at our next work session, we